Please stand and join me in the pledge.
Greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right, the consent agenda is in your package. Discussion?
Motion.
Make a motion. The agenda. I'll second.
Motion by Jorgensen and a second by Shay to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Alright. First up, we have John Rasmus, an engineer, and Brandon Bermeister, assistant engineer, secondary roads. This is a public hearing and first consideration of ordinance number 2024-08, an ordinance to amend chapter 7.50, winter parking restrictions, and set date for second consideration.
Don't we do this every year?
No, we haven't. This hasn't been updated for quite some time, so we're adding some routes that we've had problems on and removing some that we don't really expect to get problems on.
Do I need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Not in the script. Was that you, the second? Okay, well, you're now in public hearing for discussion on. Oh, yes, we do. Roll call, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Whitman.
Right.
Bell.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Thank you, Melvin. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of the changes to the ordinance for winter parking restrictions? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak against the changes to the ordinance for winter parking restrictions? Mitch, are you seeing any raised hands on teams? Okay. And this, the public hearing was posted in the newspaper as required, correct, John?
Yes.
I'm on the list. Second.
Open will be called and roll, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Okay. John. Several things in here. We refer to things as roads, routes, rightaways. We're just not real consistent in here. So I think we need to look at doing that. We've been referred to streets. So once we have a definition for all of those, I think we need to clean that up. Raising the ticket. It hasn't been raised since, what, 1999? So.
You know, this is from Matt. So we refer back to chapter 1.75. Is that where you have all the Ps at?
It's scheduled P.
So we'd have to amend that one same time or if we chase them?
We, we, we are going to be able to put this out on our, our media internally and externally, right?
Yes, I think she had a G I S layer built, so when we do this in an emergency, we can post them out.
Okay.
The announcement.
And then we should encourage those people to sign up with notice from EMA on that, those events happening. Like they do for a lot of things that EMA notifies everybody. If there's, if they sign up for it, they'll either text them or email them, or I don't think they call them. That should happen. Maybe, maybe we should just use the word public, public rightaway or something. I don't, I don't know what the answer there is for sure.
John, do we have a lot of tickets for pushing snow on to a rightaway?
No, we haven't. We haven't had too many big issues. Usually we talk to people, get it fixed, and don't really go to the enforcement.
Say we all see it at times.
We probably had cars towed twice in the last 20 years, too, so that's usually a pretty big event.
So the, other than being published, the people that live on these don't get notified whatsoever, right?
We have to recite age on these routes.
Right. You ain't got an idea what that could cost yet, do you? Is that them little snowflake signs that say, "Snow," whatever? Do some of these already have those signs?
Some do, the ones we're adding obviously don't.
Okay. The document that those are up and.
Yeah. Those are.
That's about.
But to Scott's point, these individuals that live on these roads that are being added have not received any specific communication from the county.
But John, that, that is your plan to notify them though, right?
Oh, we're not required to. If you like us two, we can.
I, I would. Yes.
Do you want the mailing before the second hearing?
No.
Or just after?
I don't have any issues with, with your ordinance at all whatsoever. I just want to make sure that, I just think that we should be notifying these people that they're on a snow route and can't park their vehicles there. If that's 1,000 people, it's $1,000. I mean, that's, they're cheap to make sure that we're at least keeping them up. Knowledgeable about what you're doing. Some of the ones that, the roads that have been in the previous ordinance, they might already know, but.
They haven't got a letter since 99, or any notice since 99.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So 750-150. For individuals to deposit snow or ice on a public rightaway in quantities adequate to hinder utilization of the roadway by traveling public, such deposits shall be removed as part of the private snow removal operations. And before such operations cease, which, we, what are we talking about there?
Oh, like private contractors pushing driveways out into the road. They just need to clear it off the road. There's a lot of time.
Oh.
They'll push it to the road.
No, I, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, but how? There's no enforcement? How do we enforce it?
Well, the, the penalty section still covers that.
Penalty section?
The 160.
So that, that, that would be in 160?
It's a violation.
The sheriff wouldn't go do that, would he?
Usually they're so busy, it's hard to get them to.
Right.
Put the cars.
So, I mean. But I guess if, if we do decide to go to 100 bucks, that might get the people's attention. I don't know if they ticket the land, the landowner or the plow guy.
Well, they have to ticket the landowner, but.
They have to? Okay.
Well, how are you going to chase down a?
Well, if he's there, you can, got him.
I don't know. I, I don't have any issues with what you've got going here, John. Like I said, I've traveled these county roads for eight years and, as I've been on this board, and I really haven't seen anybody just plow out their driveway and dump it in the middle of our county road. Not to say it isn't happening, but I haven't seen it, so.
John, real quick, you said that there was no problem, contractors moving snow out the roadways. You don't have much trouble with that as it is now?
We have issues occasionally. Usually we just talk to them. We don't.
Okay.
Don't really go this high.
Usually these, these contractors, though, they sign a, or these, they'll, they sign a contract or property owner, has stated that they remove the snow, that they don't push it somewhere. They just, they remove it. Right to say that.
I, I don't know what those private agreements.
Okay, but they don't, these contractors don't have to be listed with you then?
No.
Okay.
They don't remove it, they just push it to the side. A lot of them push it out into the street and then don't get it off in the ditch very far.
I've, I've contracted before with, and I stipulated that the snow is to be removed off the property, not in the street. Or whatever. Removed off the property and they've accommodated. Always accommodated means.
What'd they do, push it in the road?
Uh, no, they, they all went off in pickups, actually.
Oh.
Really? Yeah. Yeah. Topper. After pickup, they had to.
Johnny, what, what kind of date are you looking at for the second consideration?
I think this thing needs to go to a third consideration and we make some changes.
The second was December 3rd.
Do you have the changes that Scott wanted noted?
I've got some notes here. Off the look of our use of rightaways, roads and routes, I guess, but. Yes, I have notes.
How do you want to proceed, John?
I can bring this back if it's on the third.
The first consideration?
Then schedule that second consideration later in this December.
Alright. So no action? Tell what you're saying.
John? What?
Is that what you're saying? No action today?
Sure. Fifth.
Make those changes and get them back to, back to us, John?
Will you follow the same noise that will be put out probably by the city of, and I don't know if all the cities have notification within their cities, but Council Plus has their deal. Omaha has their deals with three, six and seven and whatever the media is. Will you follow that kind of noise then?
Yeah, we follow the same process. We usually talk to Council Plus before we do ours.
No, but I mean, as far as when they put it out, will you be saying the same thing as they are? Snow emergency? I mean, the schools do their thing, and they got a calling tree or whatever they use, but are we going to be sending the same message out as the cities of like Oakland and Preston and?
Just.
Trainer.
Just declare a snow emergency.
Pardon?
Just that we declared a snow emergency on one of the counties.
Okay, but we're notifying all those entities that put that message out?
Yes.
Okay. And then it lasts for 48 hours, right?
Correct.
Is that, is that a? You can push that out if you want, if it's a longer, or do you got to make another snow emergency for another 48 hours?
I think we have to extend that. We, we've been concerned about it, but we haven't had to extend it past 48. Considering we're over the pay droughts and 48 hours.
And then what's, how's the DOT can connect with you?
Know that they do a snow emergency.
Little six, six and 92 get shut down or whatever. They don't connect with you?
No, not more than.
Really? Good.
I think most of the little towns go for whatever they're doing.
Well, I mean, that's fine.
No, press is done.
I just want to cover, I mean, you've got schools, schools and towns, and I just want to get everybody's connected if we can. I mean, they, you know, they're going to call, they're going to call him. They're going to call him, and if they can't get him, they're probably going to call one of us and I just, you know. Hope it don't snow until we can, John, can heat the roads.
Now, anywhere on the roads besides Mount Crescent.
No, only snows in Carson.
Not enough.
Only snows in Crescent.
Not enough.
Alright. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. How was things in Texas?
I'm busy. Go down, go back.
Melvin is back in here.
They weren't worried about snow or taking.
My hand.
Yeah.
Summer there. Nice and warm.
Okay.
See if I do Granbaby?
Wait, okay.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here? Oh, Melvin doing this? Oh, yeah, I can.
And I can talk to her. Some too.
Alright. Next up, we have discussion and our decision to approve and authorize board to sign resolution number 67-2024 entitled, Resolution for Transfer from Potawatomi County Industrial Park Fund to Potawatomi County Impact Fund.
Becky.
Oh.
The email from Becky?
Yeah. With those deals.
Yeah, she didn't talk to me very much about them. I think it's just something that came up from the state auditor.
Yes, it did. Yeah.
It, it did. And basically in the repayment agreement, there wasn't ever, wasn't ever specified of when the board should make the payments. Just said at the discretion of the board. So the state came back and gave us a kind of a recommended repayment list. Basically, it's a paying 54,000 of the principal off every year for 10 years. So we'll do one payment now to get everything caught up. And then every, then on July 1st, or June 1st, excuse me, June 1st, you'll start seeing those transfers come in more consistently each year, just to pay off the interest and pay down the principal. So it pays off in 2034.
Yeah.
So it'll be consistent. Still at your discretion, you don't have to follow it, but that would be the recommendation from us to need and for us to do.
So what's the, the, what was the base number? And then what's the new number? And then what are we? And I think that was on that stuff. I should go grab it. What, what are we collecting? And how long do we set that up for, 20 years?
Matt, I talked to Matt about it. Matt, you want to share? Please, when we originally did this agreement, Matt, I'll let you go first and then I'll correct you if I make mistakes.
Yeah. So it was based off of 500, 540,000 dollars. Right, right. So that's where the 54,500 dollars a year repayment back to us accounts for. Anything, if we collect more than 54,500 dollars in a year, that gets paid back to the developer. Off the base number that we started from. We would have started with taxes down there. Yes. Right. So we are out of this whole TIF area that we have over the industrial park area. With our two mile, with our joint agreement, city and council plus, it limited us to only being able to ever collect $900,000 in TIF funds to that. Then you take that smaller, and we signed a development agreement with the developer for up to $200,000 for the water line infrastructure that went into the industrial park area. That cost actually wound up being around $120,000. And all of his payment pieces for that have been submitted to the county to account for those expenditures. So buildings are going up, TIF dollars are starting to come in. If we receive over 54,500 dollars in TIF revenues from that, then that residual piece of it would go back to Armstrong Development to pay him back the 120-some thousand dollars that he put in for the water line infrastructure. But with the tax base that we have grown down there, I do not think that it will be anywhere near a 20-year TIF. I think it's going to hit that $900,000 mark early, quickly. Was it, was it to a 20-year or not? Yeah, that's the clock on it. If it's industrial, it's 20 years. Okay. And then. But again, we're only allowed to collect $900,000. No, no, I appreciate that. But you don't know what the base amount was? I do not know it off the top of my head. Okay. It should be in Becky's thing or thing. I don't, I don't understand the auditor having issues with that. We had Hailers and Cooney do all this.
No, Dorsey Whitney.
Or Dorsey Whitney? Well, it was out here. We switched to Dorsey after this month because out here's plenty. We struggled getting comments back and forth between each other. So Dorsey and Whitney have done the rest, but out here, I believe, that's the reason why. Okay. So I don't. The auditor probably needs to, the auditor needs to talk to them folks.
I know, I think it's just.
They relied on their expertise to do this. I'm not against the resolution. I'm just saying that, he's saying he's never sat, seen anything like this before. I mean, I don't know where he's audited at or this.
Deal is, mainly he's done Dallas and other counties, a lot of cities that saw.
Hailers and Cooney, they've been around long before I was here, I think.
Yeah. This is just a recommendation from the state? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, the state auditor.
State auditor, yeah.
He thought that would make it a little cleaner in the process, I guess.
Penalty ball or nothing but?
No, no. No, the state auditor can't penalize you. No, there you find out something wrong and report it.
No, then the state attorney general comes in.
Yeah.
That's a little distorted.
Somebody else can.
Well, there's, there's nothing we did that was illegal. All we did was set that the rural impact fund dollars that we spent on that project, we get paid back first. That's what was set up.
Right.
And that's all we're doing here. You need a motion for that, Susan?
There it did.
Okay.
Very good. Yeah, I got it. Suck it. And Jeff.
So the resolution just talks about transferring 101,749 this one time. It doesn't talk about the additional payments going forward, so that's all handled in another directive.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll set up some calendar notifications to do this in June. To be an annual process of getting the money transferred from that impact or from the industrial park fund to the impact fund to pay that fund back.
Does that make the impact fund whole from this project?
101 doesn't.
How much more do we have?
400?
I mean, that's, this is just the initial installment.
Oh.
This is the initial installments of it.
Okay.
We should, you know, probably annually, that first of the year like thing, go through all those TIFs and kind of the. You know, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, for people that aren't here and have background.
How many TIFs do we have? Two currently?
Just as one right now.
Just as one.
Right. Yep. We have a development agreement signed for another one, but that housing subdivision has not started yet.
And most TIFs take a while to start paying back in any significant.
Well, we, we, not us, but your office has other TIFs they're managing.
Well, they don't manage it, but they have to reconcile the cities.
Well, I'd say that's reconciled, manage them.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's what they're working on now.
They would have a ton of them with the city here, and then they got Avoca and whatever.
About every city's got a TIF somewhere.
Really?
Yes.
You got a TIF?
I think Carson does, used to. Maybe you got it finished up. That was one.
The devil wanted to press them.
You got one?
Yep.
For the devil to be.
Is this a roll call, Susan?
It is a roll call. Melvin, are you ready?
Matt. Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Shay and Jorgensen.
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, Jessica Roers, executive director of Family Crisis Center, Western Iowa survivors of homicide unit, and Matt Wilbur County attorney. Discussion and our decision on request for funding. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us.
My name is Jessica Roers. I have the honor of serving as executive director for Family Crisis Centers.
I am Lindsay Wilson, and I am, I work the homicide and violent crime division here in, we have other counties, but Council Plus is where our office is. So of course you all know Matt.
Where is your office?
Uh, it's over, it's in the executive building right next to DHS building.
Oh, okay.
Gainesville.
I know where you're at. Trust me on why. Yeah.
We've been serving Potawatomi County for about 10 years now. Family Crisis Center started as a domestic violence program in Sioux Center, if you guys are familiar with Sioux Center. Then about 10 years ago, we received funding through the attorney general's office to expand that footprint. So we are your provider for homicide and violent crimes program, like, like Lindsay explained. So Family Crisis Centers, we have an array of different programs that fall under our umbrella. We serve, we actually have the statewide victim service call center funded through the attorney general's office. So we serve all 99 counties in the state of Iowa for, for that call center. We also have a domestic violence program that serves 17 counties in Iowa, not Potawatomi County. You guys have Catholic charities here. We have homicide and violent crimes program. We have a homelessness program, a medical advocacy program, and a visitation and exchange center that serves kids in the foster care system. So Family Crisis Centers, like I said, we started in Sioux Center. So our home office, our administrative offices are in Sioux Center, but we have offices across all of those 29 counties. And like Lindsay said, we specifically have one here in Council Plus. So have Lindsay kind of talk about what those services look like and how we serve violent crimes, victims of violent crimes in Potawatomi? So our goal is obviously we're reaching out. We're getting people that have went through very traumatic experiences or lost a loved one to homicide. So we kind of help them navigate through the whole process of things. Our goal is to try and get them early on. We get a lot of our referrals from law enforcement. And we are able to attend everything with them from law enforcement interviews to meeting with prosecution. We attend depositions, the trials, send things. We even do, I just went to a parole hearing with somebody a couple of weeks ago because their offender was up for parole. So really, our goal is just to kind of meet the victim or survivor where they're at and help them determine what they need most. We can help them get signed up for crime victim compensation program, which in homicide cases is vital for people because it's usually a huge unexpected expense that people are not planned for. We can do things from making sure people get to things that might need the match to helping them if they've, you know, been injured severely and they can't even work right now, but maybe they've never had any sort of benefits or anything. We can help them with getting signed up for those things. We help them file their claims with CVC to make it kind of a seamless process for them and take a little bit of the stress off. We can help them with victim impact statements. We, and you guys obviously have wonderful victim witness coordinators here. And we collaborate very well with them, but we are able to do a little outside of their realm. And we can go to their home and meet with them. We can provide them transportation to things if they need. I don't have a lot of limits on the ways I'm able to help people, which is one of the reasons I love my job. Sometimes if they're, you know, if they're needing services like therapy, something like that, we're able to help them get those referrals for that. Really just kind of assessing each situation as it comes.
So I want to, I want to talk just, I'll just chime in, jump in, just so you sort of understand maybe the difference in roles. So I've got two victim witness coordinators in my office. I've got Stephanie and Hope. And, you know, their jobs are, there's some overlap, you know, with that. In, certainly in smaller cases, we handle, you know, everything from, you know, helping victims apply for crime and victim assistance.
Speak up a little bit.
Sorry, my frog, my voice a little froggy from, I had some band action going on this weekend. Three different gigs, so I'm a little froggy. So the, our, for our victim witness coordinators, what they do is, is that they're number one, trying to help victims as they're navigating through the system. But they're also in charge of coordinating witnesses for our cases, right? So I'll just use this as a very good example. We just had this double murder trial with Daquante Zachary here just about a month ago. And we have two victims' families. Not everybody in the victims' families all gets along, you know, as well. So you've got that to deal with. And we had to put a case because they didn't waive speedy trial. So we were, you know, five and a half months from murders to verdict. And so we had a lot of moving parts to deal with, you know, including putting 40 witnesses on the stand and coordinating their schedules and all of that. And so Lindsay worked with victims' families to, number one, make sure that they were aware of what was going on and get them to court. Was also able to sort of explain to them the process because, you know, honestly, while normally Stephanie and Hope would be, you know, able to do that, you know, in a smaller case, when you're trying to organize schedules for 40 different witnesses, you know, having somebody else that's outside of our office be able to do that really offloads a lot of work for my lawyers and myself and also, you know, our victim witness coordinators. But the other problem, also very important thing is that, um, the wish unit, I guess you don't call yourselves that anymore, but that's my, I'm old, so that was it. So the wish unit was always Western Iowa Survivors of Homicide, I think they've changed that name. But there, um, I don't have any confidentiality with our victims. Um, you know, if they speak to my victim witness coordinators, you know, we have to tell them, you know, we work for the state of Iowa. We do not work for victims, and that can be hard because some, a lot of victims think, you know, they're like, well, the defense lawyer, they represent the defendant and you represent the victim, and that's not really the way it is. We're obviously trying to protect their rights and get them justice. But if they tell us something about the case, uh, that they want to keep in confidence, uh, we can't do that. We have to disclose a lot of those conversations, you know, to then defense counsel, you know, as well. And so it's tou- it can be tough for victims and victims' families to want to have frank and honest conversations with, you know, with someone, knowing that even though I'm on their team, I'm not really on their team, right? And so, um, I know that I've worked with Lindsay on a couple of different attempted murder trials. I know she's helping us with a sex abuse case right now. Um, she's been involved in several of our murder trials. Um, and, um, it's just, it's very, it's very important, vital, but really helpful, um, you know, work, uh, for us. So it's different than coordinating, I mean, they're really advocating, uh, you know, being there as well. Like, I wouldn't have Stephanie or Hope come into a deposition with a victim. That's not, they're, they work for my office, right? So we have our attorneys there and the defense attorney and the defendant are there, but the victims don't get advocates there. They have a right to that, um, you know, and infrequently we have, if it's a domestic violence case here in Iowa or in Potawatomi County, it's usually Catholic charities, uh, that would send a, a victim advocate in, you know, on those cases. But on your major violent cases where, uh, they've been requested, um, they're really there to help, uh, the victims. And on, I mean, I've sat with, um, I don't think it was Lindsay, I think it was Ashley Roxanne who would have been there before you, but I said, I mean, she sat, we were having a tough case. We were trying to get a plea agreement, uh, worked out with, um, you know, defendant. And so I sat in a conference room with, you know, a victim advocate, the victim's family, you know, and us, and we were able to sort of talk those things through and ultimately come to a resolution that the family wanted to see happen, um, that we were able to work out with the defense. So, um, they're very valuable. I mean, I know, and I've talked, I just talked to Jessica, so I dropped this bomb on her before. I said, I know the funding request, uh, that they've made to you is ten thousand dollars, and I'm committing to pay half of that. Um, you know, so that five thousand dollars of that ten, um, I'm gonna, you know, fund. Um, I just think, you know, obviously they do a lot of things outside the realm of just helping victims of violent crime in Potawatomi County. But I know several other counties help fund their operations, and I, and I feel like if nothing else, just the symbolic nature of saying we're willing to help, um, because they really do provide a lot of value to my office, which offloads a lot of, I mean, it offloads a lot of, like, staff time, but honestly, it offloads a lot of staff heartache too. I mean, these are families that are really going through a bad time, and I mean, I, and Lindsay knows because she's seen me in trial. I mean, I get pretty emotionally wrapped up in cases as it is, uh, but it being able to help offload some of those really tough conversations uh, for my staff where she can handle those and we don't have to go through those. Um, it really helps me, um, I think with the mental health and well-being of my staff. So that's my pitch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
You've been here before.
No, we have not. No, yeah. So Family Crisis Centers, to kind of explain our funding situation, our overall agency budget is about three point five million. Two point five come from federal and state grants, and we raise the other million through donor support, uh, board of supervisors. Uh, we have a thrift store where the profits go, um, towards our mission and then fundraisers. So we probably get support from about nineteen of the counties that we serve, and that ranges from a lot of different. Um, you know, our lowest county provides us two hundred and fifty dollars and our highest county provides us twenty-five thousand. Um, so it's really, is a really big deal for Family Crisis Centers. For Lindsay, we have another full-time advocate here, um, in Council Bluffs as well. Um, just really vital for us to be able to provide support to all Potawatomi County residents.
I would certainly be willing to support you here, here, so.
Motion.
Second.
Second out for five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Gaming.
Gaming. Is that good?
That's good.
Jessica.
A couple of questions, um, that, the work that you do is the responsibility of who, the state?
The attorney, so the state does provide funding, the state provides about five million dollars to the state. Um, so the state provides five million dollars to the Attorney General's Office. And then the Attorney General's Office, um, does a grant system, a competitive grant system, and programs across the state can apply for that. So Catholic charities receive some of that funds, we receive some of that, those funds. Um, we also receive some federal dollars as well. Um, so there's some responsibility on the federal level as well as the state level. Um, but, um, unfortunately, that just doesn't make the budget balance quite, so.
So your amount of funding from the state hasn't changed with elections?
It hasn't. We are advocating for an increase in funding. We haven't received an increase from the state in about a decade. Um, and as you guys can imagine, the cost of operating has increased. Um, so we are advocating for an increase right now from the state. Our federal dollars have significantly decreased. Last fiscal year, we saw a forty-two percent decrease in funding. Um, the funding we receive from the federal government is non-taxpayer funds, so it's actually restitution, um, money and fines, um, paid for by federally, um, the cases that are going through the federal court. So, um, the pot just wasn't as big for that, and so we didn't see as much funding. Um, Governor Reynolds came in, uh, maybe you guys read, read the article, it made the news in August. He came in with, um, bridge funding with about five point four million to hold us, um, harmless from those cuts. But we're kind of looking at the same. I had a conversation with Senator Grassley's office yesterday just about those concerns because that federal, that funder, federal funding is not still doing well, so.
Lindsay, does Lindsay have to ever testify then?
No. No.
Okay, so is there a, a report that quantifies, are you just in the fourth district or are you in all the districts in Iowa?
We are in the third district, the fourth district, and then I'm gonna forget the map to know, um.
Yeah, don't ask, I, I know the fourth. We're in the fourth, that's what I know.
I know for sure.
Can you qua- can I finish?
Sorry.
Can you quantify the fourth district for us in number wise things?
Sure.
In pockets? I mean, you don't have to do it right now, you got a document, you can certainly do that.
Yeah, I can certainly send a document too, but for Potawatomi County, serves seventy individuals, um, and answered five hundred and twenty-two crisis calls.
Okay, but that's not the fourth district.
Right, that's just for Potawatomi County.
Right, okay.
So I can certainly send the fourth.
So is the other counties on board with you at all? Are you going to them?
Yeah, we currently receive funding from about nineteen counties, and we have probably about fifteen of those counties. We received funding from them for probably at least the last decade. Um, so in just looking at our board of supervisors' work, we thought, you know what, let's, let's approach Potawatomi County. Um, so this is our first time this year, and then same thing for Woodbury County. We've never approached Woodbury County for support either and, and we're working on that as well this year.
Thank you. Matt, these people save you, save the department money.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
And I would say too, you know, like Lindsay said, all, most of our referrals are coming from law enforcement, DCI, um, County Attorney's Office. And so I think I've sat in front of many law enforcement officers that say the same thing, right? So law enforcement shows up to a scene and they're, they're tasked with the hard job of finding the person that did the crime. And it's really, really difficult for us to expect them to do that, but then also care for the victim's family at the same time. So, you know, many times we'll be called in and law enforcement will call us in, and they're doing that work that needs to be done. And our advocates are sitting with the family who just received the news that their loved one was killed. Um, you know, we had a toddler death, um, in one of our, our counties a while ago. And as you can imagine, if you get the news that somebody just killed your toddler, grief just freezes you. Um, and so Lindsay would come into that situation and really just sit with you and help you understand. So she's there for the conversation when the county attorney's telling you something or law enforcement's telling you something or DCI. If you're processing the death of your, the murder of your toddler, you're probably not processing a lot of that. So to have an advocate sitting next to you that can remind you of that conversation in a week or a month or a year from now is just really critical, to have somebody who can make the phone call to Matt to say, hey, can you tell me about any upcoming appointments we need to be at? Really allowing the family to, to grieve and not have to worry about kind of being in the trenches of the criminal justice system.
I would just give one more kind of extra reason I think that this is so valuable is like, quite a few of our victims, right, some days they are victims, some days they are witnesses, some days they are defendants, right? They've been involved in the criminal justice system, and some of our folks that end up with family members that are, you know, killed have been defendants themselves in prior, you know, occasions, and they don't have a lot of trust of law enforcement because they've been involved on the other side of the, of the, you know, situation. And so they don't always want to open up, uh, to us, um, as much as they will open up to Lindsay, whether that's because they've had immigration issues or whether that's because they've had, you know, criminal convictions of their own. Um, you know, whether they're gang affiliated, I mean, we've had all of these, uh, you know, situations to deal with. And it's very important for me, Mike, I'm not, I don't really care about that stuff. I don't really care about their history. You kill somebody in Potawatomi County, we're gonna hold you accountable for that. That's my job. And I need as much help as I can get, whether that's, you know, victims, whether that's witnesses, you know, getting them to show up to court and testify. Um, and they have to trust us, and a lot of times I walk into that sort of behind the eight ball because they do not trust us. Lindsay does a very nice job of bridging that gap, and I mean, she's seen me in court enough to know, um, that she can go talk to them and say, listen, Matt is gonna fight for you. You know, please cooperate, um, and that has been very helpful for us, I think, in, uh, in gaining cooperation from families that may otherwise not really want to be involved. They might think they want to handle something on the street themselves as opposed to letting the court system play out. And having, um, you know, having an independent advocate, um, has been very valuable to us.
As a prosecutor, Matt, though, in our conversation yesterday, you have no responsibility to the victim. You have a responsibility to fulfill the charge that is a state charge, not a county charge.
But we do have, I mean, there's a Victims Bill of Rights, and we have some, there's things we have to do. I mean, I have to keep victims apprised of court dates, I have to let them know if there's plea agreements that have been, I mean, there's certain legal responsibilities we have. But in the end, it's my responsibility to prosecute that case. It is the state of Iowa versus the defendant. Um, and, you know, my job's to do justice and it's to hold defenders accountable. And sometimes, I mean, we have to put our victims through bad, you know, to get that accomplished, I have to put victims through reliving the worst experiences of their lives. Um, and that's just part of, uh, you know, of the job.
A funding request for five thousand from gaming. And Matt, you will take care of your five thousand through a subsequent action?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I was talking, I, I talked to Tim yesterday and I told him I was thinking about doing that from collections, but I've done some looking. I think I'm gonna have that come out of our forfeiture fund. Um, you know, I'm limited, collections is an open fund, I can spend it on anything. Um, forfeiture money has to be spent on, um, activities that enhance law enforcement investigations. I don't, I don't see any issue with this, uh, doing that. Um, and so, um, even though that fund is a dwindling fund, it's, I think we're, we're putting about five thousand a year into it right now. I mean, it used to be hundreds of thousands and now, but I think, um, you know, I certainly, at least for the time being, that's my intent, is to take this out of forfeitures.
You don't see the need of this going away, do you, Matt?
I, I really don't. I mean, honestly, I, I don't. And so this, I'm telling you, this is a, I know they'll come back and ask for funding on a year-by-year basis for you, but my commitment is, is that I'm gonna continue this five thousand dollars, uh, annually. This isn't just a one-time support, I'm gonna continue to support the program.
That's, that's, that was my question, if you want to consider, um, five-year commitment instead of a one-year, you have to add back in here for a year.
Well, we've never seen them before.
I'm fine. I'll just speak for Jessica, I'm sure they have no problem coming back next year and then, and then maybe we can, uh, maybe we'll ask.
Yeah, it, it is really.
legislature might take your free money away from you, man.
Well, that's, the forfeitures, I mean, I, they can't take the hundred grand we've got sitting in the fund away now, so this'll be, I'll fund this well until I'm retired. That's a future, that's future county attorney's problem.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, I really appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you all.
Election, well, I mean, I don't think they can take the money out of our account that we already have. They can always, they're always fighting us, uh, that they're gonna take that program away. As soon as we were successful, then they, uh, started amending the, uh, the law.
If you guys think of anything or have any questions, feel free to give me a call, um, or my email is on there as well, and I'm happy to answer any.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate you guys.
Any appointments? I have read to the second graders at Titan Hill last week on behalf of the county. Um, attended East Pot Soil and Water, Thriving Family Retreat, Golden Hills. Uh, we interviewed a couple of executive director candidates. Um, I, I think we all got the audit for twenty-two, twenty-three in our email and sorting through that material. Um, we're gonna have a December third study session on the Essex Network and that proposal that was submitted. So that will be on December third agenda. And December sixth, um, is the District Four Supervisor Meeting in Creston. I'm planning on going and I didn't know if anybody else wanted to carpool along, so I just thought I would throw that in there.
Figure that out. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, but, uh, I don't, we can't, only two of us could carpool, we can't carpool three, but.
Right.
Are you, are you still got more to go?
Nope. I'll go next.
Well, I can. Said.
Thriving Families?
Um, um. Uh, HIPAA, I met with FEMA for pigeon and Nobles. MAPPA apparently doesn't like to meet in Nobles, or something, we didn't meet.
True.
Yeah, uh. Then, uh, Thriving Family Alliance, uh, Board Retreat.
Kim? Yeah?
Uh, I was pretty busy here last week. Uh, let's see, started out with the West Central Community, uh, Action. They are the ones that manage the Head Start Program here in our area. Uh, very well-run organization, uh, really, really impressed with what they had to say, what, what they are doing as far as Head Start Programs. Uh, also at the Southwest Iowa Juvenile Contention, uh, some news about that. We're gonna be getting, uh, money back from the, uh, that, uh, that organization, uh, they're liquidating their capital accounts. Uh, and we've got money in that account and we're getting a sizable, uh, uh, turn on that money, so just to let you know, I appreciate that. Uh, Potawatomi County Tourism, always a great, uh, great time, I sit in on that, uh, those discussions. Uh, Brian, you were there too. And the Council of Love's Airport Authority, uh, I really, really got to appreciate that, uh, that, uh, that. Seers, they, uh, they, they manage the airport very well. They're looking to make, uh, Council Bluffs Airport a major regional airport, very well underway, appreciate them.
West Central Community actually still meet in the basement.
Uh, no, they meet at, they meet in Harlem.
Yeah.
Uh, they're, they, they meet out, they're going out, going east of town.
Is it in the basement of that building?
No, uh, we, we didn't meet in the basement, we met in a con- at a conference.
On the main floor?
Yeah.
Really? How many people were there?
Probably seven, eight of us.
Hmm. Good, that was it, huh?
Yeah.
Can you, can you start forward me their, their agenda?
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Brian.
I've done the HIPAA training. Uh, then on Tuesday, I stopped up at the Ski Hills and they were having an insurance review audit. And I just want to say that, wow, this, this man that was doing the audit review, he said he'd never been to such a good insurance audit before and that we had really good program. Reach out to your team, Garfield, that was a really good deal. Glad I was there, and it was impressive to hear that everything was up and up. And he said he'd never been to an audit like that before, remember?
That's right.
Yeah, so, good job.
Well, I think it's a combination of. Well, I think it's a combination of myself, Jake, and Jeff, and Chris. We knew it was coming, so we collected all the data. We made sure everything was available, so make sure the place was cleaned up.
That was impressive. Then I went to the Pot County Tourism, and then the next day I went to the Mayor's Breakfast and seen what was going on there. And that afternoon, I went to Council Bluffs Visitor Bureau. Friday, I went to Advent Southwest Iowa, and then I did make it to the Winter Fest thing, which was really a neat deal down here at Bayless Park. And then on Saturday, I came to Judge Kelnelski's, I call it hers because she's got passion for it, the adoption day down here in, in the patrarium here, and I'm here to tell you, there was a lot of people there.
Yeah.
That was a neat deal, and they adopted ten children that day. And that, that was a good, heart-touching thing, so, and she's got some passion for that. I really respect that.
Melvin, does the state auditor not meet with the board chair anymore?
Apparently, you did on the entrance.
We did on the entrance, but not on the exit.
Well, we have an exit. Well, you're talking about last year's audit?
Yes.
I met with.
Well, we got, we got it in our package.
We didn't meet here in the little boardroom? I don't know who is doing that audit.
Some guy.
No, but the guy, the guy that chaired last year's audit.
This guy, a guy signed this.
Brian, Brian?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, well, he, he was on site. He was kind of directing.
But don't, don't they normally meet with the board chair before they certify the audit?
There and treasurer, and, yeah, we met.
This one was just all acceptance.
Well, what's that?
Good.
They didn't have to remember.
Yeah.
Well, I'm thinking the year before, when Brian sat in, they were in the, you were zooming in on the.
Yeah, I remember that.
Wild Rose Room.
I remember that.
Many years in my brain.
Well, overlapping audits gets confusing, too.
Yeah, that would.
Addressing everything they said to address, correct?
Well, and we don't have much time to address it because it's being audited already. And we roll. All right, public comments. Kristen, can you look, did anybody sign up for public comments? Right?
I need to talk to you, Kristen, about public comments before you leave today.